Okay, my clock just turned six thirty and I see we have a quorum. So I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item on our agenda is approval of our consent agenda. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers totaling four hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars, twenty-three cents? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? And we also have minutes for the eleven fifteen twenty twenty-two meeting. Seems like a long time since we met.
It's been a long time. We actually had one correction on the minutes. You know, pointed out to me this morning. Um, on number four, it's just a typo. Um, the approval of the consent agenda, the minutes dated November fifteenth should be changed to the meeting previous. So it would be November first.
Other than that, were there any comments, corrections, questions regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended by Mr. Styles.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman by moves, is there a second? Councilman Lowen seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? This is now our first opportunity for public comment. And we do have members of the public in the room. Is there anybody that would be interested in addressing the council? Come in.
Yeah.
You're just in time to address the council. Good job. That's person has to talk. That's not right.
There's some chairs over there. Oh, we got an open seat.
Okay, good.
Got one more. We got one open.
Okay, for our guests, make sure everybody signs in so that you get, make sure you get credit. Um, I see we have no, nobody that is interested in making a comment. So we are going to shuffle the agenda just real briefly in the interest of facilitating Mr. Joe's time. And so we are going to consider Hillsborough Senior Center funding request from our business items as our first item ahead of our KPP Energy Rate Study. So Mr. Jost, would you care to make any comments before we take this issue up?
Just that we as the Hillsborough Senior Center, just, just want to thank you for your consideration and the nice conversation we were able to have from that meeting last time. We were able to get some things from some different places that helped the senior center. But beyond that, thank you for however this turns out, we, 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 um, just thank you for your consideration.
And did somebody remind the council of the, the initial request that was made? Because I think you guys had a number that you had asked.
Yeah, ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars and that was an annual, that would be an annual request?
Right.
And that would be an ongoing annual request? Any questions for Mr. Jost?
So what's changed like for fundraising, things like that? How are that, how's that change for the senior center?
Okay, sure. The, the fundraising piece has, I think, always been pretty constant and being the same. It's just that the senior center has always struggled to do that because the people are so elderly.
And nothing's really new there, it's just.
Right, right. You know, some things that are new is we've established an endowment. Um, inflation, wages keep going up. But yet the, the, the funding pieces from the, the, the government, government entities and stuff have not kept up with inflation. And so it just keeps getting harder and harder to fulfill that obligation. Okay, so thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Joe's? Mr. Styles, would you care to, uh, to tell us where we're kind of where we're at with this?
Yeah, so I went back and reviewed the operating budget and kind of looked at some places where this could come from a ten thousand dollar annual. Obviously it wasn't in for the twenty-three budget, but I think we can make some changes and amendments to make that work. Uh, the most obvious place is the general fund, uh, it's the least restrictive. I think we had maybe mentioned, uh, maybe taking it from some other funds or maybe making a, a, a direct tax kind of situation. But I think the cleanest, easiest way to do will be through the general fund. Um, for twenty-three, we did allocate thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for community improvement projects. So that's usually, usually what those are, those senior government projects, but not necessarily. We've done other projects out of there, uh, to improve those. So I would recommend moving, if you wanted to move forward with that, that would be the place to take that money would be that ten thousand dollars, which would drop your uh, expenditures available for the senior government class projects at twenty to twenty-three thousand nine eighty, uh, which isn't, you know, it, it's a lot more than we've had in the past for that, um. Not as much as we've allocated this year, but still that's, I think that's a functional amount for those projects. And what we've seen with them is a lot of those end up going and finding funding in other different pots too. So, uh, it's not necessarily all coming out of that space. So, um, so you know, re- reallocating those funds wouldn't have any tax impact this year. If you know, we want to talk about outgoing years, then, then there may be some impact there. It just sort of depends on how we prioritize that. Um, what I would recommend, if you're going to move forward with this, is that we would want to put together some kind of an agreement with the senior center. It doesn't have to be, you know, super intense, but I think we need to have some kind of parameters on that, what our expectations are. Um, you know, just spelling out the terms of this arrangement, if it's an ongoing thing, if it's, you know, when we're going to pay it and that type of thing. Um, I don't know enough about the operations of the senior center to say what those terms need to be. But, um, I think the first step would be, uh, if you wanted to move forward, it would be to authorize us to talk more, uh, to authorize myself and Andrew, the city attorney, to develop an agreement with the senior center. We'd want to have some negotiations with them and sort of see what, what this needed to look like. Um, and then we would bring that forward to you guys for a future meeting. So you wouldn't be able to do it necessarily right away, January one, but, um, you know, we'd be able to set something up that we can, we'd be pretty comfortable with, I think.
So what we would be voting on is just negotiation.
Yeah, moving forward to direct us to start that process.
I, I, I think, you know, to be clear, that what we would be instructing them on is basically that we would be giving approval to participate in funding of the senior center, but the details, what, what remains are the details around that, right?
Yeah.
So an, an affirmative vote today would be basically letting the senior citizens, the senior center know that we are going to, that we have plans to participate in their funding. Is that right? Is that fair?
Andrew?
Yeah.
So we'll talk about the ongoing, don't we, we have to be careful with tying the hands of future councils or?
Absolutely do. Okay, and so that would be part of whatever this agreement would be, uh, there would be, you know, be an, uh, subject to an annual appropriations. There's, there's language for that.
So you, you can make it annual with, uh, with an out clause. It would, yeah, I mean, it, it would have to be structured in a way that it'd come in front of you every year. Now, whether that means it's, it automatically comes up as part of the budget or it comes in front of you specifically. We can, we can work through what you want to do on that, that's all possible. But you're right, you'd have to prove it every year.
Okay. So, for example, we have a mill levy for recreation, we have a mill levy for, um, um, on, uh, uh, economic development. And so, uh, in terms of we could, I guess we could take action that would create a, a mill, some kind of mill levy for this or not? Well, or is that, is that, is that more of a legal question on those other items?
No, it's, it's, you'd be, you'd be approving the expenditure, but it wouldn't be setting in, in, in any kind of increase in the middle levy and it wouldn't be setting aside mill levy for anything in particular. Obviously it comes from the general abundance, coming from your total mill levy.
Sure.
I want to be clear, it would not be.
Got it, okay.
Restricting the mill levy or increasing it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Comments?
I mean, I guess one comment I'd have is, is, I like the idea of this. I'm a little bit concerned about saying we're committing to it every year forward. Just from a and we could be in a situation where we couldn't do it some year. Sure. That you'd be looking at the budget going, I just, I just can't see it. I mean, obviously this year it looks like we have.
Hmm.
We have room to do that.
It absolutely is a possibility. Um, you know, that would be one of those things we'd want to talk about during the, the budgeting process. So thankfully, you know, we would be talking about that, you know, six months ahead of that. So they would have plenty of runway to.
Okay, yeah, I guess that makes me a little bit more comfortable that you'd have that.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a surprise, right, so.
Any other questions? So how would, uh, how would you like to see it as motion structured?
Yeah, I would, uh, just, I think the appropriate action would be direct, uh, the city administrator and Andrew to begin developing.
City attorney.
Yeah.
So we'd really have an agreement come up before us also.
You'd have to have it, have to formally approve that too. This just kind of gives the yes, we're, we're going to have the conversation about committing this. It sounds like you're interested in doing it, we just have to work out what that looks like.
Okay, does somebody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did everybody, did I get everybody's vote? Yeah, okay, great. It is approved four oh. Thank you, Mr. Jost, we appreciate your being here and bringing this in. And we will be back in touch.
Yeah, let me know or Betty know if there's anything we can do to help you with this.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna need to have.
Thank you. Uh, so now we are ready to turn the floor over to our guests from KPP Energy. We have today Ms. Brooke Carroll and Mr. James Geng. And they have prepared a rates, an electric rate study for our consideration. Brooke, so if you come up here and.
What, did you get one? Yeah, right here.
We're. All right, so you all should have received this in your packet from there. Um, there's extras there and I also provided you with a, a little bit of a summary and an agenda that we can kind of follow today. And first of all, I have to applaud all the young people for being here because this is pretty heavy stuff and it'll be really interesting.
They are getting extra credit, Brooke.
So over the past year, actually, um, we've been working on doing a rate analysis, a rate study for the city of Hillsborough. And, um, we also did a distribution assessment and also completed an updated capital improvement plan um, that all went into this. So that's, those are some of the things that made this study take so much time. Um, during the year, um, this rate study is, it's going to assess several different things. And, um, a lot of numbers in here, a, a lot of different, um, um, a lot of data for you to review, but I just want to say overall, I think what you're sitting on really isn't a bad situation. There's a lot of big studies that I go and present and, you know, it's, it's hard, it's hard. There's a lot of hard decisions to make. Um, there's some decisions to make, but you know, overall, um, with Hillsborough is looking really pretty good. So on the very first page, um, that, that you have in your packet is a summary that we do and, and what it is, it's a projection that goes out through twenty twenty-six that tries to take a snapshot of what we can predict to happen in the future. Of course, all these things change, especially twenty twenty-two changed and twenty twenty-one with winter storm Yuri. Um, trying to accommodate inflationary costs into things, you know, trying to look into our crystal ball. And so, um, with Matt and his, his staff's help, we were able to, you know, kind of put in, put into place what we predict your revenues and expenses to be through twenty twenty-six. Um, I want to say that, um, going through the expenses here, um, twenty twenty-two has been annualized through the end of this year. So we have updated what we predict to be, um, with Matt's help, um, you know, year-end figures, how year-end balances will roll forward. And so with that being said, the, the basic process is, you know, we start looking at the, the electric sales and we're going to go over those in a minute. Um, kind of determining what, what it looks like to you into the future. Typically, we're kind of seeing about a half percent growth in your load, um, which is, which is a good thing, which is kind of typical for small towns. Um, so that's factored in to this as well. Um, other revenue line is kind of average, that, that one's kind of hard to predict. So we kind of look at a historical back to twenty nineteen, that's kind of why you see some data in that column. Purchase power costs have been updated, um, to include the latest rate, um, that were determined last week at our annual membership meeting. Um, we've updated what we predict your load to be for the Kansas Power Pool and what we predict our rates will be through twenty twenty-six. Larry Holloway and, and James do a really great job of doing a forecast for you guys on uh, anticipated purchase power. Um, yeah, they actually go out ten years, but this is going to stop at twenty twenty-six, obviously. The winter storm surcharge, um, I'm sure Lou has brought you up to speed on that, but we predicted that you will still have to pay that winter storm one cent surcharge through June, possibly July, but you know, we're hoping June of twenty twenty-three. And so that also reflects within these numbers here.
And so in Brooke, I don't know if you, we were a couple of months behind getting started, right? You know, collecting that, so we will probably be a lagging a couple of months past KPPs.
Right, and, um, this, the revenue that we, we're talking about here that I've, I've plugged in here and I have written at the top of this, no change. That means that nothing is changing, going to change going forward, meaning your one cent surcharge stayed in place. That's what's reflected here in this, um, scenario.
Through when, the whole time?
Forever.
Through twenty twenty-six.
Forever, yes, and I'm going to show you in a minute how that, that rate kind of fleshed out to be an all-in rate for, for your customers. It's going to be on the next page, so we'll get to that in a second.
So Brooke, on the purchase power costs, showing it going down, what's, how, how are we doing that?
Um, well, we have a Jeffrey Energy Center that we have, it's a very expensive contract, which, which we've talked about, I think in the past. And, um, it has gone away and so we no longer have that. And we anticipate bringing on our own Mortzilla engines in twenty twenty-five, hopefully.
That's where incentive budget is.
We're hoping that it happens with that. So between that, um, I don't think transmission costs were as much this time around. I mean, last year we saw an eighteen percent increase, that, that was an issue. Um, we are seeing some, some relief from natural gas, but you know, that's still kind of unpredictable and that's put in there as well. Um, but the big kicker on that drop is that expensive coal plant purchase power contract that, that we were having to live by. Um, and that has gone away, so. Now, I've been told back in the day when we entered into that, it was a good deal, but things change and it's not no more. So it's history, so we don't have to worry about that no more, so. Um, capital improvement lines, um, I want to talk about that. Jay, when we came out here and did your distribution assessment, we made notes and talked with your staff. And I think we've talked about this in the past as with you all as well. But we put together a list of wants and needs and ideal projects to do. And James went back and worked his magic on putting together a capital improvement plan for you. So we could factor in, you know, capital improvement plans over time within this rate study because that's a typical, um, good thing to do for an electric utilities to continuously make improvements. And so we, we have factored in going forward about, you know, just if we were able to, to allocate about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of improvements, that would be really good, you know, just to do projects and, and work on different areas that your electric utility deemed to be, you know, ideal to start working on. So again, we factored in long-term planning with that. Um, so if we start looking at kind of the, the nuts and bolts of this and any businessman can tell or businesswoman can tell that, you know, you take your revenues and subtract out your expenses and we start looking at this net income line. So in twenty twenty-two, we, we're going to have a bad year and, um, you know, purchase power costs are a substantial part of that. Um, this city isn't the only city that's having a bad year, um, based on purchase power costs and, and just what we weren't able to predict or, you know, predicting to our budgets. However, um, we do see some relief from purchase power going into the future. And so you can kind of see that our net income becomes positive over time. So again, I want to state that these electric sales that we have allocated here or computed, nothing changes, you just continue doing exactly what you're doing today. Okay, we, we factor in that half a percent growth in our sales and our load that we can predict. Um, we, we're charging our regular rate plus our one cent surcharge and that, and that's how we end up looking into the future. Okay? Um, a second portion of this, and I'll get into more detail as we move through this, um, discussion, is I start getting real sticky on trying to come up with a, a minimum cash reserve balance. You know, um, as we talked about your, um, electric utility analysis report where I, I want to get you to a hundred and ten days of cash on hand, this factors in trying to get you to that stage, okay? Um, the minimum cash reserve that I've computed in it for twenty twenty-two and, and going forward, this is something that should be computed annually and it's not going to change a whole lot. But you know, your ideal amount that you would be aiming for is about one million dollars, you know, one million and fifty-nine thousand dollars. When we get to the end of twenty twenty-two, after our bad year of just the way it went, um, ninety-seven thousand is kind of where we're going to be sitting this year. So it looks ugly. I mean, that's an ugly number, I'm not going to stake that, see worse, so don't, don't, don't feel bad about it. Um, but going forward, you can kind of see where if we left that one cent surcharge in place and just kept going with what we predict and, and being able to make the capital improvements that we want to make, you know, and, and doing a good job in our electric utility, that difference between the minimum cash reserve balance and what your actual balance is, is getting better. Okay, it's getting better over time. So any questions on that before we move on?
So yours, so from the electric utility fund, from ninety-seven thousand, you're seeing a jump from two hundred, ninety-seven to two hundred and forty-three. Is that all because of what you said earlier about that power plant that's?
It helps, yes. Uh, it, it also takes into consideration twenty twenty-two doesn't have a, um, well, is that? Um, uh, twenty twenty-two doesn't have a full year of your winter storm surcharge. Remember Lou said that got started late.
Gotcha.
Um, and it also takes into consideration the drop in purchase power costs and, and other things. We have factored in on commodities, personnel, contractual services, and additional five percent year-over-year inflationary cost just to try to predict something into the future of rising costs. Um, we could change that if you would like to see something less aggressive or more aggressive. Traditionally, when we go do our rate studies with our members, we've been putting in five percent because, you know, trying to meet in the middle of and, and who knows what, right? So did that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just curious.
Sure. Okay, so the next page, um, breaks down your customer analysis. And this kind of gets into the, the nuts and bolts of how your revenue is derived, um, and what classes you have, what the average rates are. This average rate that I have computed here for all, all of your customer classes, which you have four of right now, take into consideration, um, your regular eleven and point nine percent kilowatt hour charge plus your one cent, okay? So if you were to average all that in together, that's what your rate payers are paying right now, okay? Overall, um, your city internal is just a little bit different. Um, that's just, that's just the way that one's set up to transfer, yeah, so. Um, I wanted to just show you just a comparison between the two. Um, actually it was twenty twenty-one that it got started in late, not twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-two. So you can kind of see a difference in those rates because when we take an average of all the kilowatt hours sold divided by the, the revenue, that changes a little bit based on that one cent surcharge. And just, just for some informational, um, informa- informational stuff here, here's some data on your customer sales and just kind of where they rock, where they lie, um, where, where everything's, um, driven from. So. The next page takes into consideration that minimum catch reserve calculation. And this is something that you might have seen before, if you recall, from the electric utility analysis report that we do. But we take into consideration, um, you know, how we want to calculate the hundred and ten days of cash on hand. And this is, you know, if we're looking at an electric utility, we like to take these factors into place. So we look at, um, your operating and maintenance expense. We don't include power costs in that nor depreciation. You guys don't compute depreciation here, but, but we have done that for you, you'll see in a minute. Um, we take forty-five days of, of those total expenses included in here. Power costs, we take one and a half times your la- largest power bill to have on hand. Historical investment in assets, um, this is your depreciation amount. And I'm going to talk about what we have computed as, um, evaluation of your electric system in a minute. It will come into play when we're talking about that minimum cash reserve balance that we were talking about earlier and kind of why we're trying to, to obtain that amount. Um, and anything over that. Total five-year capital planet outlay in place. So we take everything that you have put into your capital outlay for the past five years or, and going forward, which we've computed at a hundred and thirty-five thousand with James's, um, capital improvement plan. Um, we take twenty percent of that and include that in there. Hundred percent of your annual debt payments, we like to have on hand. And so we get to that one point, uh, one million fifty-nine thousand dollar amount. So that is the amount that we get to, to get you to actually a hundred and thirteen days of cash on hand. So that, that just gets you over just a little bit. So the reasons that we like to have that one million dollars on hand is if the tornado blew through here, you've got cash on hand to get stuff back up and running. Not saying that supply chain is going to get you anything, but at least you've got money in the bank and you're ready to spend it, okay? So.
And Yuri was an example of that too.
Yes, exactly, right, or anything, you have money on hand to cover expenses.
So Yuri was six hundred thousand, a little bit less than.
Yeah, so. So take that into consideration, um, that, that million dollar cash reserve balance. So the next page, when we went out and did your distribution assessment, we, we knew we were going to do this rate study. So we did a, we did extra evaluation, you know, we counted polls, we tried to, we have to put a value on your system. And since you're on a cash basis and you don't have, you know, a running fixed asset schedule with depreciation computed, we have to, we have to try to put something together for you. So luckily, James does a really good job of, he does a lot of project management for KPP and, and he's able to have actual price costs of replacing these items today. So, you know, when he's working on projects, he's able, he's got a tool that helps him compute this stuff and put a value on it. So we, these values on your historical value is actually a replacement value. So if everything got blown away today, yeah, that's what you're going to have to pay. And so after we went and did the distribution assessment, you know, we, we felt that your system was in really good shape. So we were able to kind of estimate what we felt was, you know, a, a good depreciation, what was left of that system. We have computed that, you know, practically only a third of your system is probably depreciated. Everything was really, looked really good and, and, and that's what our report stated. So when we start talking about that minimum cash reserve balance at the beginning, you know, eventually over time, we're going to need to, you know, replace nine point five million dollars worth of assets, right? So when, when our fund balances get down to ninety-five thousand and we don't have anything, we haven't even got to that million dollar mark, something happens, you know, we don't have that cushion that we need to do. And so when we start getting to the point where we're over that million, that's when we start recommending that that amount needs to start being put over into a reserve fund to start replacing these types of assets when it comes to. Okay? Any questions on that? You guys have any questions back there? No? So we have two options, um, Matt and I talked and, you know, we tried, we wanted to just bring a couple of options to the table. I don't know if Matt's looking for an answer tonight or if we're just trying to explain everything and, and, and what we can do at, on what we're going to do next is, you know, after we give you these two scenarios, you guys can decide what you want to see. If you hate this scenario, we'll throw it away, we'll start over, I put it in my system, we try something else. So this isn't set in stone, you guys can tell us what, what you want to do, if anything. So the first option, this is, all of the scenarios is exactly the same except for we've changed. Um, we've let that one cent surcharge in place, that we've changed our base rates. And so there was some discussion about adding, um, currently, right now, across the board, all customer bases pay twelve dollars and ten cents, right? Um, per customer. So we, we've kind of talked about maybe dividing into some different groups, having residential pay fourteen, um, what was it, fourteen fifty and residential out of town and commercial customers pay seventeen. So when we plug those figures in, instead of just the twelve, ten. So when we plug those figures in, instead of just the twelve, ten across the board. You can see how our, our situation changes. And it brings in typically an additional about fifty thousand dollars a year. Okay, that's the revenue change just from that change. You can kind of see that, um, that change gets you closer to your minimum cash reserve. That we're trying to aim for. Um, your ending operating cash looks better. I mean, it, it's a good scenario. I mean, you're, you're going in the right direction. It kind of depends on how aggressive you want to be and, and how. How fast you want to try to get to these goals. Okay? Yeah, so the next one, the next option is option two. And we've done the same thing with the base rates with those customer classes. Then we added a one cent on top of everything. So there's a one cent adder across all rate payers. And you can see down here at the bottom what their rate would end up being. Residentials would be thirteen point nine cents per kilowatt hour. Um, actually, they're all about thirteen point nine cents per kilowatt hour. And the base rates would be fourteen fifty and seventeen dollars. That brings in approximately, um, two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars, a big difference. Um, from that fifty, what's just changing your base rates. Um, all the way up through twenty twenty six where it actually escalates based on that half a percent growth that, that we're seeing. It gets you about up to two hundred and additional two hundred and eighty one thousand dollars per year. And you're getting to the point where you're in the positive over that minimum cash reserve balance. Where we can start putting money back into a fund where we're waiting to do, you know, substantial substation upgrades. Or whatever it is that you want. That's what I have, so.
Which one would you recommend?
Oh, gosh.
I know, that's kind of, that's a loaded question.
That's a loaded question. I, I think I can, I cannot make a recommendation on that. I can say that the council needs to, um, feel how aggressive you want to be. I mean, we could, I didn't do it, but we could go back and do a half a cent adder across. If you, if that you felt like, well, you know, that, that's just a little too aggressive, we can try that too. You guys as a council and as a community have to determine how you're going to respond to your customers and how. You know, how many calls you want to get, how much publicity you want to get, um, what your goals are, how. How progressive you want to be with projects. Um, this takes into consideration. Um, you know, this scenario takes into consideration transfers. I mean, you guys are huge transferring cities. This is left in place. You're still to get to do everything you want to do by transferring to the general fund or wherever funds you transfer to. Um, we haven't cut nothing. You know, we haven't said, well, we're going to cut that out and raise the rates and no, you know, I mean. You're getting to do everything like you would normally doing, um. But you know, how aggressive do you want to hit those reserve amounts? The industry standard of a hundred and ten days to try to get you to, you know, where, where you really should be.
Yeah, that nine million, nine and a half million in depreciation out there of assets is kind of a scary thought too, because it's a. You know, replacing a substation and.
Right, and.
Lots of other.
It's a third depreciated is kind of what we estimate. You know, you, you've depreciated about three point four million based on our back of the napkin, trying to do the best we can to put a value on the system. But it's in good shape. I mean.
It is.
As we looked at it, it was pristine. I mean, there were only a few things that we really had to dig at to put something on the report to come. To come and report to you. So I mean, it's in good shape. If it was, if you were a city and that, that number was. Seventy, eighty percent and stuff's falling down and we're in the hole, I mean, that's a whole different story. You know, and we see that story. We see that story, so. So I would say in that instance, I would probably press you to be aggressive. I think it's time to be aggressive, but. I think you guys have the wiggle room and you can, you can make that decision where you want to be.
So that. Just to be clear, the, all the scenarios here include continuing on the surcharge, basically converting that from a surcharge into the regular rate. Um, you know, whether you decide to, to change the. The base rates or you can look at the, the addition of the adder, I guess is what we're calling, um, you know, that's. Completely up to you. Uh, we do have strategic goal to build our fund balances across our utility fund. And I can tell you that the ninety seven thousand that's in the utility, in the electric fund makes me nervous. Um, you know, we're kind of living one month to the next, so. Uh, we haven't had any issues, major issues, but if we did, then that would be something we would have to have a different conversation about. You know, I don't know that I. It, it really does come down to how aggressive do you want to be? I can tell you at thirteen point nine cents, um, that's, that's not. Uncommon, that doesn't put you, you know, head and shoulders above everybody else as far as rates go.
That is very competitive.
Still extremely competitive. So you know, it, it is a change. Obviously, it's an increase. People have been paying the one cent and you know, that would be an additional cent on to that. I, I would say, I, I'd love to tell you we had. And it's, you know, we, we're also talking about a lot of things that we don't necessarily have a lot of control over. I can tell you this year with inflation has been insane, so five percent sounds great. I hope, I wish, I hope it's five percent as we move forward. Because that, you know, right now, if I had to buy it, while even buying a transformer, it's eighteen months out to get it. Uh, to buy a new digger truck was a five year waitlist, so it was like, it's ridiculous right now, so I, you know. If, if, if things were a little bit more mellow, I, I would probably favor being less aggressive with it. But at the same time, you know, as it sits right now. I, I don't know, I would, I would recommend maybe thinking about being a little bit more aggressive with it.
So last time we had a radio.
Two thousand seventeen or sixteen, I can't remember. Yeah, sixteen or seventeen. It's been a minute, um, since we've done that.
You know, and that's, that's the problem anytime when you, you know. Let so much time go by without addressing an issue, you know. Obviously, we dealt with a thirty, thirty or forty year water contract year, year or so ago. We saw that, you know, the impact of, of, of that amount of time, you know, in, in terms of those rates, so. When we went to the, uh, APPA meeting. One of the breakout sessions did talk about rates and, and, and how to design rates and how to keep rates. You know, in, in place so that you're not shocking the system, you know, every five to ten years. And, uh, you know, so maybe part of, part of our strategy is, is a. A little more progressive strategy in that, you know, we, we start stepping up, you know, over. Some lesser period of time than we've allowed to, to go by. Up to this point.
I just kind of wonder how much that one cent raises the average home residents.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's something that we can do, um, if, if you wanted to pull some customers, um, especially maybe industrials or large users or even. Grandma and grandpa, we can do that analysis for you.
That's pretty straightforward.
We, I mean, you've, you've got the customer numbers in here, you know, you could probably do the, you had your calculator out, you could probably.
Yeah, it's not terribly complicated. Um, the thing I, I think people kind of. Because I mean, that's what the, the customer is going to look at.
My bill went up. You know, ten bucks or fifteen dollars or.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, yeah, I totally understand that, um. One, one misconception, I think we need to, to make sure everybody understands is that. Uh, the city of Hillsborough's electrical system does not include a lot of the industrial park. Um, that is serviced by Evergy, uh, and for good reason. I don't know that we wouldn't want to be in that business just because there's. Usually contracts to, you know, you, you have to keep the power on for such amount of time. And if there's outages, you're responsible for that. And just the size of the, the transformers and the infrastructure you need to keep on hand is kind of cost prohibitive. Uh, but tho- those are not customers of ours. A lot of people seem to think that they are, but they're not. Uh, our big customer base is, you know, it's going to be residential, commercial makes up a good chunk.
Our educational.
Our educational facilities, uh, Tabor's probably our biggest single. I got Karen here. Tabor probably the biggest one. They've got the most accounts, probably, yeah. So.
U S D four ten.
Four ten.
Right after.
It's coming close and to. Uh, Co-op, and they're a pretty big count too.
Yeah, that's. That graph will show you.
You know, you know, the thing, the thing is, 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 as has been stated, you know, we've, we've used the electric. Utility as well as our other utilities as revenue generators to subsidize our general fund and other funds. And so that just becomes a balancing act. I mean, if you want to stop doing that. The alternative is, is to raise property taxes.
Yeah.
So it's a ba- you know, it's a balance. I mean, you know, where do we, where do you hit that balance? And, you know, I feel like as a, as a city, over the years, we've done a pretty good job of keeping that in balance. You know, using our utilities to help us offset the, the need to, to, to raise property taxes. But, you know, at some, at some point with the rising costs that we're looking at, you know, the. The facts are, are the hard facts and, you know, we're stuck with dealing with them, you know. And kicking the can down the road is probably not, uh, probably not a good idea either.
So Lu, Lu, I liked what you were saying about an incremental look. You know, one of the things I guess I see is if you did. Uh, first option plus a quarter cent. And then looked at, maybe you were mostly planning on a quarter cent next year and a quarter cent the year after you. Build that in a little more incrementally.
That was one of the scenarios. That was one of the scenarios that they put forward again at the APPA conference this summer. You know, and in terms of strategies. And the idea is that you, that you hit it, you know, basically almost every year a little bit. To keep from having to come in every five or plus years and hitting it with a big mallet, you know. And, uh, again, not hitting people too much at, at one time.
Into not hitting people too much, but also allowing, you can adjust from that too. If you get to next year and go, man, we underestimated, we didn't gain anything. Then you might have to, to change that. And if you gain more, then great.
But again, you know, what, what, what has been prepared here is just basically a framework and a format. For us to have those conversations and discussions. And, you know, these, these templates are set up so you can plug in any or all of those scenarios and see what the numbers say, right, Brooke?
So Matt, if I had a suggestion, like what David was asking about getting an idea of what kind of an average user.
Oh, yeah.
And if we could do that for quarter cent, half cent, one cent kind of idea, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I see how much it affects it, Bill.
Looking average use that we calculated in Augusta, eight hundred ninety two.
Yeah, right there around eight fifty to nine hundred.
So that, that's an average use.
Kilowatt hour, so. A cent would be nine dollars, you know, for, for an average user.
Yeah.
So we could run that average on yours as well if, if you wanted.
That's probably pretty close. So you're looking at. Nine dollars. So if you do a quarter, do a quarter point, you're looking at two, two dollars and fifty cents.
Or, yeah, and that's if you don't choose to change the, the base rate, um, that's permanent, right?
Yeah. So, you know, unfortunately, what we're tasked with is we have a, uh, you know, we have a, uh, city that's made up of. A variety of different constituencies and, you know, we have a fairly large constituency that's on fixed incomes. And every time you, you, uh, raise, you know, costs for people on fixed incomes.
The hardship.
It's just another hardship. So, you know, there are, there are different communities that have different rate structures as well. You know, in terms of residential, commercial, et cetera. And some of them, uh, you know, I know are, are heavily weighted towards industrial work. Cities have a fairly large industrial, uh, base, you know, they're, they're a little more friendly in terms of the rate to the, to the industries. As opposed to the residents, you know. And so Hillsborough, we're actually, you know, we're, we're just pretty much hit everybody straight across the board with the same number, so.
And from that perspective, it's extremely simple to understand, but yeah, there, there definitely could be some. And that was sort of the intention of changing the base rates and, and looking at that, you're kind of tiptoeing into that area where. You know, industry or residential people aren't going to get as much as commercial people, but the rate still remains the same. You can get into some complicated rate structures.
Suggesting that, I'm just saying, you know, we're, we're, we're a city that. I think again, you know, thinking about this idea of balance, I think we've done a good job of keeping things in balance, keeping things simple. Easy to understand, you know, but again, we're just at the point where we're faced with. You know, the reality of these increased costs that we've had to deal with and. You know, we need to do, I think we're going to have to do something and just, again, what it is, you know, remains to be seen with. With what we're going to ask you to bring back and, and put in front of us, so.
So you want to look at some incremental.
Sounds kind of like we have a pretty good.
Yeah.
Ballpark of that already too.
Kind of an idea where we're going to be at.
And again, I want to say what the, what we proposed here with the base rates and the all in rates at thirteen. Very competitive still. I mean, it's not something, when I, when I look at all the cities that I know, you're not going to stand out with those rates. I mean, now your customers may think differently, but, um, if, if you were to line them up against my list. Uh, of cities and of what everybody's charging. Tell them to find another city to live in.
Definitely.
Than this.
Definitely a rate to be proud of.
Yeah.
For sure.
It's not out of line, it's not, I don't look at it and think, whoa.
Yeah, with the system you have to.
You know, and, uh, to that point that, you know. I, I understand you're joking, but, but you know, that's never been our approach, you know, we don't, we don't, uh, we don't. Talk to people that way. We, you know, we listen and, uh, we try to do what's best for everybody and, you know, that's. That's a hard, that's a hard thing to do sometimes and, and none of us are Solomon, so. You know, we have to get wisdom from where we can and, and I am very appreciative of. Brooke and, and James and all the work that KPP does and this is where being a KPP member city pays off. When you have this kind of support, that, uh, that we can do that and.
Yeah, it's very helpful, yeah.
You think about, uh, you know, the upcoming, we talked about just briefly the Wartzilla project, but those things. And, and you know, there's some other things that, uh, have been weighing on my mind in particular and this may not be the time to, to talk about it. But I'll just say things that, that have concerned me are our ability to protect our city from power outages. That are outside of our control. You know, and going forward, you know, what do we need to be thinking about as a city to have backup generation? Whether that's some kind of a combination of solar and, and, uh, rice generation. You know, and that with a battery backup system like we've installed in, in Minneapolis. I don't know, I don't know what that looks like and we certainly don't know. There's a lot of questions still out there with all this infrastructure money that's. Floating around out there, you know, and how that could be used for, you know, capital improvement, system improvement, so. You know, there's just a lot, a lot to think about, but, uh, you know, I know we're going to need to address these rates and we're going to need to do it sooner than later.
Yeah, and the usage isn't going to go down.
Well, I hope not.
Not with the amount of electronic advice.
Well, if, if, if our, if our, if our, uh, if our kilowatt hours go down, it means. Really means one thing. It means that we don't have as many people and we don't, or we don't have as much business as we used to, and that's not a good thing. So. So do you need, uh, further direction at this?
I think we have a kind of an idea of where we want to go. We can cook up some scenarios that will kind of. Specific people too. Um, pretty easy to drill down on those and I think Brooks, Brooke can pretty much make any rate work relatively quickly, so.
Well. I guess my only suggestion, you know, pending council, uh, you know, uh, agreement is. Is maybe have three different scenarios. I think you can, you can just. Add in for the item scenarios. I think let's, let's come up with three potential scenarios. And then we can put them back on the table, uh, for first meeting in January, second meeting in January, maybe.
Do the first one, I think, probably.
Well, we've got, we just got our normal, you know, swearing in and.
Right.
Swearing out and stuff.
So when, when I first look at this, I think about the base rate. Plus, plus quarter percent.
Okay.
Of course. So I'd like that to be one scenario.
Quarter percent per year or?
You, I think just right now you just do the first year, but I, I, I am thinking more that incremental and, but.
Yeah. Yeah, there's definitely a.
I guess.
A lot more political will it has to have. A lot more political will that has to happen with the, an incremental setting like that, because you're talking about making an increase. Every year on the regular. Sometimes people get a little squishy about that when you get going down the line.
But since we're projecting twenty twenty six, I as well project.
Yeah, we can do it.
And again, you know, you want to pay now or you want to pay later? Or how do you want to pay?
We'll be able to plan about shocking the system in a little bit at the time.
Sure.
You know, and I think people. Don't have a bigger problem with a little bit of the time as I do and you.
And again, you know. Not, not trying to keep going back to the summer, but I mean, it was, it was enlightening to me to think about, you know, that if you put. That kind of a system in place, just knowing that you're addressing it. On an annual basis, and that's part of, I think, what you were talking about, Brent, is not, not just, you know. Kick the can down the road five years, but every year be taking a look at it and see where. Our results are and are we getting to where we need to be? You know, and we've had numerous conversations around this table regarding our. Our fund balances and, you know, our fiscal responsibilities and, and, you know. I know, I know that, that everybody here takes those very seriously as, as do I. You know, and, and it's, it's really what kind of legacy do we want to leave? Well. Quite honestly, my, the legacy I want to leave is, is, uh, you know, a city that's, uh, that's in good fiscal. Shape, you know, that's not, not sitting there going hand to mouth, you know, all the time.
So I think we want to do. Update the equipment like Matt talked about is a really good idea too. And you just can't let stuff go until it finally gives out. You gotta have some money on hand to bicep to replace stuff.
Right.
I think we all realize that there's something we gotta do.
And our needs, not just in electric, but across the utilities in city are. Are great when it comes to especially equipment. We spent a lot of time talking about that, so.
So, we have direction?
I think so. We'll bring you back through scenarios and, uh, talk about incremental approach and. And show you kind of what the impact is to individual households.
Brooke, thank you very much. Okay. So we are now, uh, down to, uh, second item under our section E, business items. And that is ordinance thirteen sixty one, authorizing a conditional use permit. Two oh eight West B Street to operate a bed and breakfast, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is, I think the fourth one of these we've done since I've been. Uh, so this is getting to be kind of a routine thing. Two oh eight West B Street, single family home between Ash and Birch. They have bought this, uh, have bought this home and are remodeling it to put it on Airbnb or VRVO. You pick your app. Uh, so in order to do that, you have to go through the conditionally use permit process, which. This property did. We had a planning commission meeting on the first of December. Uh, had a public hearing. We had no, no comment around this. Uh, no members of the public came in. We did have a little bit of discussion at the table from the planning commission about allowing. Continuing to allow a number of, of bed Airbnb kind of uses when we have a need in housing. Uh, because this, this house could very easily be a, a single family home for somebody. Um, but you know, the, the other part of that is that somebody bought this with the intention of doing this, and so it's hard to say. You know, how, how do you, how do you make that determination?
To me, the markets, the market will figure that out too. If you don't, if you have too many Airbnbs, they're not getting rented.
They won't get rented and it'll eventually find its way back on the market, so. That notwithstanding, that was kind of the, the only concern that we had. Um, so. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval for this permit. Uh, we don't have to staff any objection to that, so we're recommending the adoption of. Ordinance thirteen sixty one and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Any questions, comments? Anybody care to make that motion? Councilman By moves is our second.
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council, councilman By.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
All right. The ordinance thirteen sixty one is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Next item is a consideration of revised Barkman Honey Agreement for sewer improvements, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we approved the agreement.
With I recuse myself of the last name. I should probably accuse myself of this one too.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Uh, so we did, uh, approve the original agreement back in October fourth. Um, went back through that. We were going back through it with Parkman and we noticed there's some errors in that. Um, we'd used some estimated numbers and. Uh, we had started negotiating this contract year previously, so. Uh, at that point, that was the, the numbers we had, uh, but we went back and converted some of those to the actual numbers. Um, and we were able to figure out a, a different solution with the monitoring system as well, which deleted some of that cost. Um, so the net changes there ended up going from a hundred and twenty five thousand twenty eight dollars to. Ninety three thousand seven hundred and fifty nine. Uh, and so what we've done here is, is revise this agreement. Uh, in order to reflect that change, uh, we also deleted the language regarding the, uh, monitoring station at Barkman's request. And then we also deleted the, an easement that was attached in there too. We didn't need to have that in there if we weren't going to be doing that. So we. Basically simplified, uh, the agreement with them. Uh, so this, if we approve this, it would supersede the previous agreement. Um, and then we'd be able to move forward with that. They've already made some payments on the previous agreement. We will just take those funds and apply them to the new agreement, so. Uh, it wouldn't.
Barkman has approved this.
Yeah, they, they've signed up on the copy you have is their, their signature. They've signed on it, so.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve, uh, adopting the revised Barkman Honey Agreement for sewer improvements.
Make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Driggers, please. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item up is Marion County Conditional Use Permit PC dash two two dash zero eight, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, Marion County received an application and for a conditionally use permit at. Eighteen oh three Indigo, which is the northwest corner of Indigo and one eightieth. Um, the previously on that property was kind of a barn. Barn might be generous, uh, a building there that needed to be demolished. Uh, it's kind of an oddball piece of property. Um, the issue with it is that, you know, the county received this, this, uh, notification, this application. Uh, and they went through their normal process and we, we then, the city never received a, a notification, but we did. Uh, we did get a courtesy notification from the county planning department about it about two weeks before the proposed building or before the hearing. Hearing was set, scheduled for December first. Uh, so we started to review the materials and there was a lot of questions that came up with that. So normally, and, and Andrew's going to have to chime in too with talking about extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. Because it's, uh, a little bit murky for me, but. Everybody, yeah. Um, so whenever the city goes to a zoning and zones the city, there's technically in state statute, a three mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. In order to claim that, there are certain procedural things that have to be done. Uh, and when we adopted the two thousand eleven zoning code, it. It's unclear whether or not everything got checked on the boxes there. So. Uh, normally, if you have a situation where somebody requests a special, a conditional use permit. A hundred, a thousand feet from your city limits, you would have jurisdiction over that. So our planning commission would hear that. Uh, and then you would make the determination that, that's designed to protect your, your growth area, that, that in area of influence around the community. So, you know, I talked with the planning department a little bit about that and, you know, we would like to have heard this. Case beforehand, you know, have a little bit to do that. Um, regardless of the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction issue. Whether or not we have that or not, uh, it's a question to be determined, I think. Uh, but the county's own zoning regulations, article twenty four, section one oh three, provide a process for a city to be notified if something is close to its. Uh, borders and I think, you know. Couple hundred feet is pretty close to your border, so I think that they probably ought to have used that particular section. So. What that section is, and I've included that in the pu, the packet for you, um, you know. We have the opportunity as a city council or as a planning commission, you know, we have time to engage the planning commission too much on this issue. Uh, to make, uh, review this potential, potential application and make comments with it, uh, and we can actually. Uh, file a finding with the, the county planning commission. In this case, you know, it would go to the, the planning commission and then move on to the county commission. And then they have to approve it by three quarters majority. So four out of the five commissioners would have to approve it in order to. To go around what the city has suggested, uh, in its finding. Um, so that all being said, that's the kind of procedural background here. Uh, I have anything to add to that, Andrew, or is that?
No, no, that's, that, that's, that's pretty much it. If we, if you make a recommendation against approval, then. Uh, that would get sent to the county planning commission. They have to, to, to override that. They'd have to vote four out of the five.
So we asked the, uh, planning commission, they had a meeting scheduled, a public hearing scheduled for December first. Uh, we asked them to delay that, so we may have time to review this application. So they have done that to December twenty second. So what we've got there is the, the application, you have the copy of the application and then a copy of. Uh, what the presentation was presented or to be presented to the planning commission in Marion County. Uh, this is for a commercial, you know, the conditional use basically allows them to do a commercial. Operation where they would rehabilitate shipping containers for, uh, homes, kind of a custom customization project for that. Uh, the, the issue that we can see from that is the location of that really doesn't conducive to that use. I would argue that what they're proposing is more of an industrial use. Um, you can kind of see from their presentation that they're, they're, they're kind of laying it out. Uh, they've got sort of a showroom, some, some, uh, digital signage and then also a. Uh, kind of a staging area, work area made out of shipping containers to do the work. We, our, our, our closest residents are Willow Glen and they did receive notification about this and I did hear from them. About their, uh, desires on this particular project. They are not in favor of this. The homeowners association is not in favor of this and several of the individual residents have. Have mentioned that they are strongly opposed to this proposal. Uh, basically, it's just because it, it is. An industrial use in what is essentially a, a residential growth zone. Uh, so if you look at the city's comprehensive plan, this area is designed to be a residential area. Um, we've got the second phase of. Uh, Willow Glen platted, the city now owns in the land bank. Um. The natural kind of development of that area would probably be for, uh, housing and not for this industrial type of business. Um, there is a, a home in the suburban residential district across, across the street, directly across Indigo. I don't know what their position of it is, but I'm, I would, I would assume that they're probably not for that. I can't speak, you know, definitively about that, but. So. There's also some questions, just some technical questions about this, whether or not that lot is actually appropriately sized. It's an oddball. Section of property. It's, it's kind of a triangular shape. It's got some floodplain issues on the, on the western edge of it. Um, so there's, there's, I think, some questions to be answered there. Um.
What, what would be the setback from the road too?
Well, that would, that would.
Setback there.
Yeah, that's what.
I would think that through the conditional use process that you're, they're essentially approving an industrial use and so. You probably have.
Have to dodge chickens.
Wild chickens. While livestock.
Awful close to town.
Remember the goats?
You know, and one of the other comments that we heard, uh, from, from Willow Glen people in, at the brief comment, con- conversation we had with the planning commission. Is this really the, is this really the first impression you want people coming in? Because they essentially are going to as- associate that with the city of Hillsborough because it is. Right next to the city of Hillsborough. Uh, you know, is that really what you want to do? I'm not saying that the, the property there before was, was pretty or gonna win, you know, yard of the year or anything like that, but. Uh, I just, there's a lot of open questions about this and is, is it really suited for this area and. I would, I would propose that it's not. It's really more of an industrial use or at the very least a commercial use. Uh, and there's plenty of opportunity in, in probably better spots, um, to, to build that type of property all across the county.
Um, or even industrial park.
There's lots there. We've got commercial lots. We've got, you know, there's lots of lots available for something like that.
And to your, to, to anybody's knowledge, this potential business owner has made no effort to contact the city in any manner.
No, no. And I wouldn't, you know, i- if they've been dealing with the planning commission in Marion.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about in terms of their business, in terms of.
Oh.
You know, trying to utilize city economic development, you know, support. Nothing there.
Nothing there. Now, we've had no conversations on that.
We'll be finding a better place, I would think.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I certainly think there's anywhere. There, there's a lot of other options across the canyon that would work probably better for this.
So I first saw it, I, I kind of like the idea of this business.
Sure.
In town. I'm probably with you. I don't know if this is the right spot for it. But I, I think maybe one of the things I'd want to know, kind of what Lou was asking. If they were interested in coming to Hillsborough, can we not talk to them about some of the other locations available?
Certainly can do that.
Yeah, I agree. That'd be a nice business, but I think, like I said, we need to maybe find them a better place to build right there on the corner.
Yeah, I'd even be worried about road tra, like that being the turnoff for this.
Right, yeah, there's a lot of traffic coming to go and it's. You know, what they're talking about is pretty short.
Mm-hmm.
Shorts, uh, drives on that, so.
Short drives and you'd be coming off at a fifty miles an hour into a parking lot that's not going to be very deep. Like that's. None of that seems to be very.
So there's this issue and then the, uh, the county road, uh, the one eightieth is, is a dirt road. You know, and floods just literally right off of Indigo is a flood, flood zone there.
Right, but just, that's what cuts that corner off of that.
Yeah, that's the western border of that.
Yeah.
Property. So we find ourselves in a little bit of a, a time crunch too, because, um, you know, we have, we have basically thirty days to make a recommendation to the. Planning Commission in Marion County, uh, December twenty second. So. What I would recommend, you know, I don't, if you wanted to find more information, we could do that. We certainly have, we do have a meeting before. Uh, the twenty second, but, uh, you know, based on what I have heard, I would not recommend. Uh, moving forward with this and I would, I would recommend that this council issue, issue to something to that effect to. Uh, the Marion County Plan Commission, um, on this. I'll certainly try to go to that planning commission meeting on the twenty second, but. Uh, I think that we need to at least make, make some kind of effort to, to respond to this. Like I say, our Willow Glen people, uh, residents to this, to the, that border of this are not, definitely not in favor of it, so. Uh, that would be my recommendation.
Oh, I, I see, uh, has, has been brought up a number, not just. It's not just an aesthetics issue, it's just a practical issue and a safety issue for me. And that's, you know, it just really is not conducive to, to road safety and traffic coming into. Our community on the heaviest traveled road. That's the heaviest traveled county road. Indigo, yeah. So. Um, would somebody care to, uh, to, uh, to move that the, uh, that Hillsborough City Council express. Our, uh, our, uh. What would it be? Our negative opinion?
So, yeah, it would be wanting, we would be essentially denying the proposal.
Yeah, we would, we would be.
It would be a recommendation to.
Deny.
To the Marion County Plan Commission to deny the conditional use request permit.
Okay, so would somebody care to make that motion?
Make that motion.
Councilman By moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, consideration of a golf slash rec maintenance position to end description, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is actually the, we're, we're titling it Golf Recreation Assistant Superintendent Position. Uh, so with the, I'm coming on of the golf course management, uh, what we'd like to do when we take into effect. Take that over, uh, is look at adding a second person, uh, full-time second person that would help with golf and then also with recreation stuff. Just to, we, we find that there's definitely a need to do it. Um. It's a situation where, uh, someone who's, who's full-time would probably spend a good deal of time. This person would work directly under Avery Unruh. Uh, the golf course superintendent, uh, and then. Uh, the golf course superintendent, uh, and then would kind of shift some of those responsibilities. During the, the winter or off seasons to help with recreation type things. Uh, in order to pay for this, we've talked about, uh, eliminating our contract mowing for those areas. So it'd be like. Uh, the, the airport area, uh, the, uh, museum and then the fairgrounds there, excuse me. Um, so what we're talking about is taking and managing all that as one kind of chunk. Uh, and then of course we'll have the golf course revenue coming in to offset some of those costs. So. Uh, we, we certainly have the, the resources that would pay for this position. We're talking about something in the neighborhood of the. The thirty-five thousand dollar range, uh, would be a benefited position. So. There's, there's some costs associated with that. Not sure if we're going to find. What we're going to find as far as going out and trying to find somebody right now. We've had a couple of open positions in the city that we have not been able to fill. Uh, water, water sewer position and the streets position, but, uh, we'd like to take, take this if we can get approval for the, uh. For the position description and then we would move forward, trying to find somebody to fill this. Uh, kind of the highlights here, it's again, it, it mirrors a lot of the things with the golf course. Uh, which also are cross, cross applied to, uh, maintaining the, the sports complex, the, you know, the fairgrounds, museum properties. Pretty much all of that stuff within that area. So we feel like we could do a pretty good job with that. Uh, it's an exempt position. So it wouldn't be an overtime person. It would be working probably more hours in the summer and then, you know, fewer in winter.
Questions? Comments? All right, hearing none, uh, we have a, uh, we have a position, uh, for consideration. Uh, so I'm assuming you'd like us to approve.
The position.
The position, creating the position. So the motion would be to create the position of golf slash rec assistant superintendent.
Correct.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we're now down to item six. Here's, we have some invoices to consider from Ford Motor Company of Hillsborough, Kansas.
Correct. So we have a, a couple of, um, a couple of invoices total a hundred and five fourteen. Uh, we've got just some work on the golf course, um, Ford. Superintendent's truck there. And then we also have a police vehicle. Yeah, Jesse's, so it's a police vehicle on there too. It's a regular service type thing.
So we have a total of a hundred and five dollars and fourteen cents.
Correct.
Would somebody care to make a motion to approve payment of those invoices?
I'd make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Sure.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those abstaining. All those opposed, motion carries. We will pay, approve that payment. We're down to your report, Mr. Styles.
Yes, sir. Uh, so we've got a number of financial reports there, uh, because of the timing of the meeting. We've got the regular thing from, regular report from Danielle and then the dashboard report there. I don't want to spend too much time talking about it. The biggest one we've talked about is the electric department. That's the one that scares me. Um, and so we've kind of covered that. I would kind of highlight some of the pain points and these are not new to anybody either. Uh, gas and diesel, that's the one that's kind of killed us this year. Uh, utility costs have been kind of high this year too. So a lot of that, you know, some of that is city utilities, but we've just consumed more. There's also some, uh, additional things with. Uh, internets and, uh, you know, our, our gas stuff as well too. Um, or natural gas, excuse me. So we've talked about the electrical fund, we talked about that. Uh, sales tax though continues to remain strong. That's a bright thought. Uh, collections, we're going to exceed a million dollars this year, um, twenty twenty-two, forty-six percent higher than the five-year rolling average. Twenty-three percent over last year. So that, that continues to be a bright spot. That's, that's a good deal. Uh, health insurance savings report there. We've got the November one attached, save seventy-two hun- over seventy-two hundred dollars from last year from our fully funded plan. Managed to retain savings of over twenty-nine thousand through the plan year, which started in July. Uh, end of our, end of November, we had a claims reserve of over a hundred and three thousand, almost a hundred, uh, four thousand. Or a hundred and three. A hundred and three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine ninety-four, so three hundred dollars there. Uh, our target is a hundred thousand. So now we're able, we're putting ourselves in a position where we can kind of, can adjust some of those things. Uh, and, and manage that on a month-to-month basis. So we'll be able to see some of that savings retained in the funds from which we pay those things. So general and utilities, so. It's good news there. Um, open positions, so we've, we've had, like I mentioned before, we've got two that we can't fill. Uh, we also decided to, to not, uh, fill the vacant front desk position. We've been able to kind of reorient some of those duties. Um, and we've got Karen and, and Brittany and Danielle taking, taking on some new things and we've made some adjustments. To that. And so I feel like we're able to do that. There may be some more times when we have to close down sometimes. Uh, for example, we had some people out sick, uh, so we had to close for lunch. And that, that will happen more often, but I think overall it'll be kind of a net gain there. So. The, that type of thing will happen, but I think we're in better shape and moving forward. I think we've got a really solid team doing that work. Uh, I got the KPP bill. Seems like we talked a lot about electricity, but here we are. Projecting next year, Brooke had mentioned that overall the cost thirteen percent reduction in our energy costs due to that Jeffrey's contract expiring. That's a good thing. Uh, certified election results. So Mr. Driggers won, uh, award one and Mr. McCarty won award two. Congratulations, John.
Congratulations.
It's a hard fight, right?
Yes. Yeah, we got a little, got a little contentious there, I know, but appreciate that. Uh, new phone system. You may see that phone over there. You can kind of see that's what our new phones look like. Pretty cool. Uh, it's a hosted VoIP system, which is voice over internet protocol. Um, TCT worked with us a lot on this and it was really a very positive experience. Well, actually we ended up paying next to nothing for the phones. They were able to include that with our service contract and actually our price monthly will go down. So win-win, we got a new phone system. We didn't have to do much and it really reduces our overhead for the phones. We, the old system was very antiquated and it was extremely expensive to fix if something broke and. Uh, we're just excited to have it and we're happy to, happy to have worked with TCT on that. They've been a great partner. Uh, RFQ for city property liability insurance. Um, you know, we've, we changed agents last year. Um, one of the things we've seen pretty significant increase in, in our costs. Now we did make some changes to what we were covering, which helped. Uh, we had some things we weren't covering, which needed to happen. Uh, but we did see some pretty big jumps with EMC. Um, talking to a few other people who are in the market in similar positions we are that have, uh, January renewals and they're seeing. Anywhere between ten and twenty percent increases in their premium costs. So I think we need to be proactive. Uh, with trying to figure out how we're going to approach our property liability insurance and see if we can kind of minimize some of that. Um, one of the things I, I think the place to start with that is to talk about agent. I have had several people come and talk to me about interest in being the city's agent. You know, we switched over to the insurance center. This last year, we really didn't have a whole lot of discussion about that. We just. You know, Kakeem came in, we made a change and that was about it. Um, so now we've got some other people who've shown some interest. So. I, what I would like to do is put together an RFQ and kind of try to figure out. Evaluate those people and see if that's something we want to make a change for. I really had to have an insurance, an agent in place before we talk about the plans, because they can, any of them can get, you know, go get the quotes, but. It creates a weird situation if you don't have a designated agent, so.
Little guy be back. Through last year.
Oh, yeah, probably. They're probably still interested. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. We, we've got to look at some alternative stuff. So, uh, you know, the costs are just getting crazy.
I was gonna ask, that reminded me, Matt, when you, when we were going through this and they have that nine thou- nine million, whatever that number was. Are we adequately covered in our, in our?
Yeah, I think we are.
Okay.
I do think we are.
As we had that evaluation, that matched some, well, what we had for that line.
Yeah, pretty close. I mean, it's, uh, yeah, they're on, they're on a hundred percent, but they do.
Okay.
They're reflective, yeah. So, yeah, that's something I'm going to bring up. Uh, we need to make that decision fairly early in the year, because we have a, uh, April first renewal for our insurance. Uh, and wellness, one of the things we'd like to talk to you guys about is, uh, potentially accessing. Infinity Fitness memberships through payroll deduction. Uh, they've approached, we had several employees mention that that would be something they would like to do. Uh, there's a corporate membership rate that, uh, Ryan offers as a discount for first responders and. And so he would extend that, I think, to everybody in the city if that was something we were willing to do. Uh, we also have an opportunity to maybe match that. I think he gives like a ten dollar discount per month. So we could potentially match that with some of our. Our money that we have in our reserve fund. I, I think we could do some more with wellness now that we've got flexibility with our health insurance plan. Got a pretty good reserve fund. I think we have some rooms to make some investments in wellness. Um, I don't want to go crazy, but, you know, at the same time, we, we have now a, a vested interest in employees taking care of themselves. So maybe it's something we need to be a little bit more proactive than we have been in the past. So. I like to look at doing some kind of wellness committee or something in the future and, and kind of moving forward with that. But we'll probably bring you something to look at as far as the infinite fitness stuff.
It'd be, I mean, just as a payroll deduction, that's easy, right? It's, it's if you're going to fund it before the city's going to fund anything.
Yeah, it's whether you want to do anything to help with that or not. You don't necessarily have to do that, but we can set up the payroll deduction part. Tomorrow if we wanted to, but we'd still like to get approval to do that anytime we add something.
Great.
That is all I had, sir. Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, any questions? Comments? Well, okay, we're now into our, uh, final public comment opportunity. Uh, don't see any additional. Members of the public online, anybody, guys, anything? So. When, I'm gonna, I'm gonna preface this and say, when you guys are sitting around this table. And you had, uh, had a rate increase and, you know, what, what would you do? Any recommendations? You, you, you did, you were listening to us talk about it, right? I just, just wondered if anybody had, uh, had some thoughts, you know?
They might have a better idea than we have.
That's what I'm thinking. All right. Well, I'll stop picking on you now, okay? And we appreciate you being here and, and your colleagues online. Thank you for being here, guys. Um, finally, we are into council comments. Councilman By.
Uh, I'll be gone last week of December, so leaving out the twenty-six, I'll be back thirty-first, so. If you need me, you can call me, but I won't be here.
Okay. Very good. Councilman McCarty? Councilman Lowen?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Driggers? Is there any other business that needs to come before the city council, city of Hillsborough, Kansas? Hearing none, I consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.